All right, it is five thirty. I'll call to order this regular city council meeting of Monday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. If you could all join with me, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Please note that all members of the city council are present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any additions or deletions. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to the approvals of minutes. The first one we have is the last city council meeting, November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deitch. He was just a little bit faster, or my better ear. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to the minutes of the special canvassing board meeting of the city council on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Approve.
We have a motion to approve from councillor Crowe, or, uh, Bowler, sorry. Yeah, I'm bad on this here, that's the one that's I'm losing it.
Second.
Got a second by councillor Holden. Any discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please. I may. Either of you, I know, I know where we're going.
Yep, councillor Bowler brought it to my attention today. I do have a typo on those minutes of the write-ins for the center ward councillor and the west ward councillor are flip-flopped. It should be a ten for the write-ins for center wards for councillor Wagner and a four for west ward councillor Bowler on the write-ins. When we canvassed, they were correct, just on this version of it, they were inadvertently flip-flopped. So I will get those corrected and, um, put it properly.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four for the motion and one abstention. Next, we'll go to the committee of the whole minutes from November fourteenth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. I heard a very quick second over here from councillor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four for the motion, one abstention. Next, we'll go to the payments and claims and accounts payable. We have some transfers going to the four oh one permanent improvement of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, and that's coming evenly from the six oh one water and the six oh three sewer in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Transfers going to capital outlay, the four oh three fund is twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents. That's coming from the six oh one water in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents, and coming from the six oh three sewer in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, for total transfers of ninety-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eight cents. Accounts payable, International Falls claims of three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and forty-two cents. Airport commission claims of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents, and International Falls Public Library Board claims of eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents, for a total accounts payable of three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and payments claims.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. We have a second by councillor Bowler. Got both of the names correct. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. We have, uh, three items on the consent agenda. The first is going to be approve the two thousand and twenty-three license renewals, approve the two thousand and twenty-three Ameritas dental insurance renewal, and allow necessary travel expenses for the human resources safety director to attend the two thousand and twenty-three Upper Midwest Employment Law Institute in St. Paul, May eighteenth through the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. No discussion on the consent agenda, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to license renewals that include tobacco or alcohol applications. Uh, we have a handful of them. Uh, the first one is going to be Amex, uh, tax and duty-free shops, DVA, Duty-Free America. They're also looking for gasoline pumps license. Forestland Sales and Service, uh, doing business as Pizza Barn, that's a restaurant license. Uh, Fun Food Factory, um, oh wait, I'm sorry, I'm, I, I moved too fast. Those were the, that was the consent agenda, my fault. I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page. Uh, the ones that we're looking at for the cigarette and the alcohol licenses is, uh, Border Oil Company, DVA, the Jug Liquors, they're looking for a cigarette license and not sale liquor license. Forestland Sales and Service, a cigarette license and gasoline pump license. I-Palls Group LLC, uh, doing business as Cobblestone Hotels and Suites. Restaurant license, on-sale liquor license, and a Sunday liquor license. Orton Motor Incorporated, DVA, Orton's International Falls Senics. They're looking for a cigarette license, gasoline pump license, and a three-two, uh, off-sale license. And Timberpins Incorporated is looking for on-sale liquor license, uh, restaurant license, bowling alley license, pool table license, and a Sunday liquor license. Uh, those are the ones that we have before us. The chair would entertain a motion to approve those licenses.
I'll make them.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. Any discussion? Chief, have we had any issues with any of these? Okay.
That should be your job now.
Yeah, I guess I'll take that one over. All right, so we have a motion, a second, any other discussion, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the planning commission, uh, information regarding the preliminary plat of parcel ninety-two dash zero zero six dash four three zero 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 for AV Backers Housing Project.
I think, um, Kelly Myers, building official, and Isaac are here to give us an update for information of the planning commission meeting and the status of the project.
Thank you, please come forward.
I think, Mayor, also, we did have a public hearing on the, uh, proposed, uh, planning of the, uh, Backers AV project. It was on November sixteenth. And we, uh, went through the process. We do have, in fact, we do have pictures of the split. We do have larger ones here in front of Isaac that if there's any questions, basically what it is, is it's a split of the existing property. We, uh, will be doing some construction notes after, but the preliminary plan, we showed boundaries, boundary lines, and everything that's necessary to move forward. Final plat, basically, in your packet, you'll see that, uh, section twelve-four lays out the full process as far as the next steps, basically how they, uh, the, uh, the surveyor, the land surveyor will report to the city administrator the, uh, the final plat restrictions with the, the block copies and everything else, and we'll go to the city attorney, and then we'll go to our engineer, and then it will be brought back to you guys for final approval of the plat. So that's kind of where we're at, it's kind of laid out here in a resolution. Just be having questions, or if Isaac wanted to add anything to that, that's.
I'd be happy to answer questions about the project, to maybe say a little bit about it. Um, we asked, we actually, a local nonprofit, a nonprofit out of, out of, uh, central Minnesota and the metro area are working to redevelop the Alexander Baker Building with historic rehabilitation tax credits and low-term housing tax credits to the twenty-seven apartments in the community. And separating the two buildings, both legally and utility-wise, has been something we've been working closely with Kelly and the city on. And we were glad to host the, uh, kind of mission for a brief tour to showcase the new plant line. This is, of course, part of that larger process of separating the properties to eventually do to, hopefully, construction. I hope, should, most everything ultimately be approved by the city. Any questions?
Any assurances on the funding now that, uh, everything's changed in that state?
So, um, one of the challenges we have with this product has been that our state did not renew the state's historic rehabilitation tax credit in their last session. Um, we are feeling pretty good that they will, uh, pass that this upcoming session. That said, we've taken steps to fill that gap in financing by asking the state for some additional funding. So, should that not come through, that is our gap.
Do we have a backer? Well, with, with the Eklund situation being up in the air, I know he was the, in the house, he was the author, so.
I don't know who the coalition will be having sponsor the bill, but it has a lot of bipartisan support. And it's, I would say, Rob Eklund and Senator Bond, who are both long-term major sponsors of that legislation. But I think.
Eventually, I'm not saying that, Eklund's out, but he's still up in the, we can, so, which doesn't happen.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, no, I take them personally.
All right, next we'll go. Next, we'll go to, uh, the resolution for the two thousand and twenty-two routine maintenance agreement, uh, between the state of Minnesota, the Department of Transportation, and the city of International Falls for, uh, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, man, uh, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to, uh, request from, uh, police chief Koschik to fill a vacant full-time, uh, patrol officer position. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that, uh, vacant, or to fill that vacancy.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. We have a second by councillor Bowler. Discussion? Do you have anything to add, Chief? It's pretty straightforward. All right, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, uh, just, um, acknowledging the fee increase for pediatric advanced life support classes that are being offered by the International Falls Ambulance Service. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those, uh, price increases.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have two recommendations, uh, from the committee of the whole last week. Um, I will start out with, we were, uh, two, two council members short, so this was moved forward and, uh, to the committee so that we can all have the discussion. First item is the, consider the sale of the property, parcel ID, uh, nine-two-one-one-four-zero-one-one-seven-zero, and advertise for proposals in accordance with section ninety-three of the Home Rule Charter. We have a motion to approve from councillor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. Discussion?
Mayor.
Please.
Uh, as we discussed at committee of the whole, my concern then, and is now, is blight. I guess we need some kind of safeguard in here to make sure this does not turn into a blight area if it's a storage area. That's the only concern I have, and I'd like that written in to the sale.
Uh, as part of the, um, yes, and we, we have that discussion here in the, maybe the whole, that we can do that, um, part of the zoning thing as we. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as I understand it, it'll be used as a lay-down yard to, um, help facilitate setting up for construction.
We, we don't know that we're putting it up for sale.
Putting it up for auction. Oh, that's for auction, for auction. I thought that was what they, yeah, that's what they want to do, it's what they want to do with it. So they have to go up for auction first, and then if they, if whoever purchases it could potentially, okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, uh, and what is the process that we go through, um, on putting it up for sale?
Put out a request for proposals, uh, advertise it, and anybody interested, uh, in the proposal, it's, and a mission offer. Council, you can, you can accept an offer or reject all offers for, with no action, and, and, and the whole, I don't know, the city.
So this isn't taking like the highest bid, this is?
No, it's fair, you kind of could, uh, by asking for proposals, people are just going to make offers to you. What you do with those offers is up to you.
And what are we looking at for a timeframe on this? Like?
As soon as we can get it put together, and then, you know, advertise, we always, our normal is, you know, advertising two weeks, and then seven to ten days, and then we bring them back as, you know, they'd be sealed bids for the proposals.
Offers. Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, any other?
Whenever you are disposing of property owned by the city, our charter requires that you do propose. You know, there, there has been, it's my understanding, a property owner, uh, another property in the city that is interested in this, uh, and they can do a proposal, but it would violate our charter just to make a deal with them and have open questions.
Understood, completely understand that. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have, uh, consider moving forward with replacing the vacant deputy city administrator position.
I would make a motion that we move that to the next, uh, committee of the whole meeting in December, because we did on half the council, we discussed it the first time.
Okay, we have a motion to move back to committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden, and a motion by councillor Bowler. Discussion? I, I guess I only have one question. I have no problem with going back to committee, because I, I, I actually like when all four, all five of us are there to have good conversations. So I have no issue with it going back. The, the only, the only question that I have on it is why we're bringing it back to committee at this time? It was in the budget for next year, so we've already financed the, the thing, we've already had the discussions in budget and finance throughout the course of the year. That's the only question I have of why we're, why we're, we're stalling it right now. There's no immediate need for it, I, well, I, I, one would argue there is immediate need for it. However, I just, that's my only question on it right now, because this is something we have discussed moving forward.
Please, why, let me go back to the, yeah, full committee, so we've been all discussing it right there, that's one thing, everybody. So, that's where this discussion will go, I expect.
Fair enough. Please, Mayor.
Okay. Um, I guess I missed that in the, I missed that in the discussion, I guess, in the budget piece. And went back and took a look at the, um, the June, I want to say, the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. There was a seventh minute of that, uh, city council meeting, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the deputy city administrator. It was when we decided to hire Sherry, um, as to whether or not we were going to hire a deputy city administrator. And, and this council, as we sit right here, um, basically, had a consensus that we weren't going to hire a deputy city administrator, and then, we, and, and I watched it, and I wa, I've watched it a couple times, and I watched the discussion. And initially, my reaction was, okay, yeah, we need one, but then we lost it, we lost it, and, and, I, I don't disagree that we, that we need one. Um, I'll be honest, my only, my concern is, is raising taxes to, to pull it out. So, and I'm honest, I'm being honest, that's, that's my concern, I can be honest, I'm elected official, I, I, I have to, I'm staying my peace. I, I somehow missed that in the budget discussion, that we, that, that it was there, that we had budgeted for it, that we, um, we haven't set the levy yet. I, I know we've got some budget finance meetings coming up. We've got some discussions, and then we've got an airport piece that we're still kind of waiting on, so the budget is still kind of sitting there. We don't know what the levy's going to look like, we have the preliminary levy, but we're not there. We've got some discussions to have. Um, we can have this discussion now, we can have this discussion in committee, we can have it at the budget finance meeting. Is this where we're going to have the discussion, right here now? Maybe can, or, or we can have it in the committee alone, doesn't that?
I have no problem.
I'm just saying why, I'm just saying why I feel. I'm just curious, though, I mean, if we were going to send it back to the committee of the whole, I mean, I think, why, I want to know. Yeah, we're having discussion right now, I mean.
I, I think the discussion's important, because this is taxpayers' dollars. Yeah. And as I reiterated, the same thing you're saying at our committee of the whole meeting last week, that, uh, we're spending too much money, and I'm going to go ahead with my discussion right now. We, we had, we had, the department heads, the department heads, we asked them to cut another forty thousand dollars off their budget last year, or for this coming year, which they did, they went over and above and cut another forty thousand dollars appropriations, we cut twenty percent of appropriations. Uh, the levy went up, um, more office needed, if that's going to go up to eighty thousand dollars, and we've been cutting everybody else, I guess I have to question that. We hired a, an HR person, we hired a fire marshal this last two years. We've been doing too much, too much hiring, and our money is flowing out, even though we budgeted for it, doesn't mean we have to spend it. I've got money in my checking account, doesn't mean I'm going to drain my checking account. I guess I'm against this just because of the taxes and what we decided a year and a half ago.
I'm just the opposite, I think we need a bath. Get the foot, the phone, and, because we don't have enough people doing the job.
I understand, where's the money come from?
Well, say it's budgeted.
The budget's out of the taxes.
That's all I need to know.
From the taxes.
That's all I need to know. I don't want Betty Bergstrom and the rest of the administrative staff to fall behind in the work that needs to be done.
I agree, I don't either, but.
Well, how are you going to do it, you don't have people working on it.
All right, guys, uh, it, it has become very clear, we have some discussion, and there should be going back to committee of the whole to have some, uh, lengthy discussion about this, and I, I, but I do agree. But I, I agree, I mean, we obviously have some, uh, some differences here, we need to come to not necessarily a consensus, but make sure that everyone feels comfortable on, uh, that their questions have been answered moving forward. So, with that being said, any other discussion specifically on moving this to committee of the whole? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a, a resolution, uh, for approving an application to conduct an off-site gambling for the International Falls Recreation Hockey Association, with a drawing to be held on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at Kerry Park Arena. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business come before the council? Hearing none, we will go to boards and commissions, committees, and department heads, reports of the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, council, um, myself and Chief Manasseh did attend the rural, the future of rural ambulance and EMS in Duluth on last Wednesday. It was very well attended, there was probably fifty-plus people there, uh, we're not alone. Uh, ambulances all over the Minnesota, all over the nation are in the same boat, funding and staffing. It's, that's the theme. Um, Representative Hewitt was there, he did comment that in the new legislation, there should be relief, and that's all he would say. So we don't know what that means, we'll look forward to hopefully help with funding for our, you know, for all rural ambulance services across the whole state and nation, so more to come on that as it comes forward. Um.
You said that was coming within the next month or so?
He just said in the new session, so. We're hoping.
Betty, excuse me, being that there's that many different places that are having the same problem, can't they all group together and put some pressure on?
Well, that's why we're having these meetings, that's, you know, to talk to our legislators, and they've been down there talking to them, it's been continuous. This is not a new thing, it's been coming for a long time, and it's, we're finally getting there. Some of these things take a little longer, but hopefully we'll see something soon. So, yep. And continuing to work with Kita, the city attorney, our city engineers on the multimodal project, that's moving forward as well. Um, that's, we ca, uh, did the post-election review with the auditor treasurer today, and indicated, he indicated that the state will be canvassing on the twenty-ninth. After the state canvases, that's when we will know if there is going to be a recount for, um, the Scraba-Eklund position. So we will know that, you know, after that, and then we can report on that. That's all I have now.
All right, any questions for the city administrator? Uh, we'll go to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, council, I have nothing, uh, special to report.
All right, any questions for the city attorney? How is the transition set, because now we're, we're two meetings away from having a new city attorney, and you retiring and going off into the sunset on your horse.
Well, Chelsea has been taking over all of the, uh, criminal prosecutions, uh, and, uh, we have one more, uh, court date set up in December fifteenth, uh, when there'll be a visiting judge handling. Will be my last effort, and I'm trying to resolve as many of those that I can, any that I don't, uh, Chelsea will just take over and proceed. A couple of projects working on, uh, uh, been working, uh, with Betty, uh, on the Green Tech grant, been working with Betty, uh, on the multimodal, uh, and so trying to wrap those up. But essentially, anything new that's coming up, Chelsea's already been handling, so I would think that there should be a really seamless transition. I don't anticipate, uh, issues at all.
Steve, have you been keeping Chelsea abreast on the multimodal thing?
Chelsea's not been involved, uh, with that, no.
Okay.
I mean, basically, where we're at there, uh, is, uh, we are, uh, we've been going back and forth on development agreement, uh, and now, uh, uh, we've gotten clarification, the legal description we want to use for the first phase, uh, and so, uh, I anticipate that this week we'll have something put together to send back to them, uh, and, uh, I would really anticipate that we'd probably have a signed agreement by the end of this year.
Okay. Um, what if it goes longer?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not rocket science, Chelsea, uh, and her law office, uh, are very capable of, uh, just, you know, coming in and, and, uh, you know, again, I, I will be the city attorney, but I'm only a phone call away, and if somebody has questions or Chelsea, uh, wants my input, I'm certainly going to provide it.
All right.
And another piece of that, too, is the city administrator, myself, councillor Kraus, and, uh, Paul Nevin, have all been involved in those conversations as well. So it's not a complete loss by him walking out.
Kraus is walking out, too.
As, as it turns out, myself, the city administrator, and Paul Nevin, have also been working on that.
Oh, he got her.
So, all right, anything else?
No.
All right, any other questions for the city, uh, attorney? All right, we'll go to the department heads, I see we have two in the room, anything to bring forward? All right, we'll go to the reports of the mayor, council committee, boards, and committees. Alright, we'll go to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward?
I will look at the Senator Perkommission, I would say. I know, I talked to her probably about six, uh, about two months ago, maybe. She was resubmitted them because there was a blanket fund where she put it in, and instead she's itemizing everything that it's supposed to go for. Hopefully that'll get some results.
Excellent. Um, my, myself and Counselor Bowler ended up attending the American, uh, grand opening last week. Um, beautiful hotel. They had, uh, they have, um, representatives from pretty high up in Amerithian there, the owners, the, um, uh, all the staff were on site. And they did tours of the hotel. Very, very nice property. Um, very excited that, uh, the city was able to work with them to help that project move forward. With that being said, uh, we now have got to make sure that they stay busy and fun.
Please think what's really interesting is they had a, they had a, a drawing, but you don't go in and you put your name in there for a drawing. They gave you a card, and you had to go meet the owner, you had to sign off, you had to go meet the manager, general manager, he had to sign off. You had to go to the bar, they had to sign off, you had to go to the breakfast bar, they had to sign off, and then they had a tour upstairs where you had to go to one room, and there was some person there. There was, the first room was like that old apartment type room where they had the fridge and everything, just like a little apartment, and there's a person there that would sign off on that, and you had to go to the second floor. They had one there that was, uh, I don't think it was a double king or something anyway, a special room, and then it went through four, five different rooms that you had to go to and get signed off, and then you could turn the card in. Did you win?
I never got past the table this far.
But I thought that was kind of a neat way to get everybody to hit the tour of the place, otherwise you just walk into the front door, you see the entrance, and you don't get to see the room, but they're beautiful rooms, they're beautiful.
Uh, one of the, one of the unique things, not trying to sell one thing over another, but this is, uh, International Falls, it has the second prototype in the nation on that particular building. Um, there's only one other one, and, uh, it's, it's a new model that has not been seen much in the United States, so kind of unique and kind of wonderful.
One more unique thing that came out of this. And it's, it's really neat, because the, uh, somebody asked if they had any veterans parking outside. How come there's no veterans parking? And the owner says, you've never thought about that, they never had it before, so they're going to start veterans parking in all the Americans.
Wonderful. Um, the only other thing that I have is, uh, um, I did have a conversation with Jeff Anderson, which is, uh, our legislative, uh, person for the city. Um, there is a lot of projects that, uh, the city is, um, involved in. One of them is the Kerry Park Project, which, uh, sounds, um, sounds promising still. Uh, with that being said, uh, he also had the discussion about the ambulance taxing district and having um, International Falls more down at the, at the state capitol to be able to see our faces, because we, uh, we're pretty far north, and a lot of the legislators down there, with the exception of the ones that directly represent us historically, um, Eklund and Bach, um, a lot of them don't see us, so we're, we're not faces that are, uh, are familiar down there, and he highly suggests that the, the council members go down there and talk to, uh, talk to our legislators about the issues that we have, which is, uh, quite a few. We, we, we have a lot of stuff going on in northern Minnesota that, uh, that involves, um, the state, so that's a, a push for you guys to, to get down there and have some conversations with our, our, uh, elected officials down there. I have nothing else. Does anyone else have anything? Boards, commissions? Hearing none, we'll go to audience. Anybody in the audience that has anything to bring forward? Alright, hearing none, we have, uh, correspondence in your packet, International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Conventures Visitors Bureau minutes uh, from September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, Koochie and County Board of Commissioners, uh, draft minutes for November seventh twenty-twenty-two, and the International Falls Recreation Commission meeting information for November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, our city, uh, will be closed on Thanksgiving, um, Thursday and Friday this week. Next regular city council meeting is Monday, December fifth. And the city council's, uh, truth in taxation is going to be on Monday, December fifth at six PM, and the last thing is on Thursday, the, um, the parade and all the events in Smokey Bear Park um, that is being put on by Rainy Lake Medical Center. I would love for you guys to, um, either be part of the parade or go support the parade. I know that the police and the fire and public works are all going to be assisting in some capacity. Am I incorrect?
What was the date?
Friday.
Friday. You, you said Thursday, so it is Friday, the day after Thanksgiving.
It's totally Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. Yeah, I know, that's totally the right day. So, uh, support the event. Thank you so very much. Um, so anyways, it should be a great, uh, holiday. I hope you guys enjoy your family, friends, and, uh, everyone have a great Thanksgiving and celebrate with the rest of the community downtown on Friday. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.